I'd like to call the order of the May 5th, 2015, the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners and invite you to stand if you wish as an offer of invocation, then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for a wonderful day and a wonderful week. The weather's been great for us here and we pray that you'll give us wisdom as we consider the decisions for the city this evening. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Dunning.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. The only recognition we have on schedule tonight is from the U.S. Small Business Administration. The Kentucky office has notified us that the 2015 Kentucky Woman Small Business Advocate of the Year is from U.S. Bank, Michelle Gorman, and we extend our congratulations to Ms. Gorman. All right. No other awards or recognitions from anyone? Mr. DeFebo, do you have any comments for us tonight?
I do not.
Glad to hear that. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We have the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 21st, 2015.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Are there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Now we come to time for public comments. This is an opportunity for people who have something they'd like to bring to the City Commission's attention, and this is the opportunity. If it's not on tonight's agenda, that's the opportunity for you to talk about it. Tonight, we have a guest with us from our Bosnian community, Gina Jelil. Did I say it right?
Gina Jelil, thank you.
Jelil, I didn't say it correctly. And she has some information to provide us about some upcoming event.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Commissioners. Good evening, City Manager, Mr. DeFebo. Good evening, fellow citizens of Bowling Green, my friends and neighbors. My name is Gina Jelil. I'm a member of the Bosnian-American community. I have moved to Bowling Green in 1998. Tonight with me is Adisa, Amina, Senida, Canan, and Mirza. Our mission is to raise awareness of the brutalities and injustice that occurred in Srebrenica on July 11th, 1995, that systematically massacred 8,372 innocent lives. We want to walk peacefully to commemorate lives lost in Srebrenica, other towns in Bosnia and Herzegovina, and all genocides that have taken place in history, as well as those happening today. Later, please show the video. Thank you. Hundreds of thousands of people have died in Bosnia during the war in the early '90s. In Srebrenica, during a three-day period, 8,372, mainly of male gender, were hunted, slaughtered en masse, and buried in mass graves, surrounding the town of Srebrenica, as you saw in the clip. Many more men and women and children held captive in the proclaimed United Nations Safe Zone were tortured, raped, and killed. Such brutalities and injustice was unheard of in the vestments Hitler and the Nazi regime during the Holocaust and World War II. Eight years following the end of prosecution and ethnic cleansing of Bosnian Muslims in Bosnia and Herzegovina, Srebrenica's Memorial Center was established, and the grand opening was hosted by the former President Bill Clinton on September 20th, 2003, in a small town of Potocari. Upon entrance to the Memorial Center, once the place of U.N.'s Safe Zone, every person that enters is greeted by this prayer. "We pray to Almighty God, may grievance become hope, may revenge become justice, may mother's tears become prayers that Srebrenica never happens again to no one and nowhere." Once the war was over, many survivors fled to numerous countries throughout the globe in hope for religious freedom, education for their children, and a chance for a new beginning after everything they had -- was lost. Out of the approximately 7,000 Bosnian-Americans living here today in Bowling Green, the majority are survivors of this ethnic cleansing and are coming from Srebrenica. This year marks 20 years since the genocide took place, and our community wants to commemorate those who lost their lives. We want to remind the world of the injustice and mass murder that occurred in the heart of Europe during the 21st century and pray that such atrocities never befall the human race in generations to come. The walk will be on Saturday, July 11th, at 3:00 p.m. We will start at the Circuit Square Park, walk to the Justice Center for a minute of silence, and then walk back to the park. We will sell T-shirts, and we will encourage all of our participants to bring a school backpack with them. As you saw in the clip, as people were evacuating and leaving Srebrenica and looking for peace, they had their belongings in the backpacks. So after they were murdered, there were several backpacks, thousands of backpacks actually found on the streets. So we would like to get people to bring backpacks. We have partnered with Tony Rose and his Stuff the Bus organization, where we will donate these backpacks and donate those, distribute to the local schools. We will also arrange an educational session that, where we will show a documentary film, invite a speaker from Western Kentucky University, professor, to speak, and have some of the survivors tell some of their stories. With this, we want to invite you, dear City Commissioners and fellow Americans, citizens of Bowling Green, to come walk with us, remember the lost lives, including Adisa's two grandfathers and six uncles, Amina's first cousin, who was only 18, Senida's two uncles, sorry, three uncles, grandfather, and a 14-year-old cousin, Mirza's two uncles and a 13-year-old cousin, and my dear father. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. We appreciate you bringing us that information. And again, that's July the 11th at 3:00 p.m., starting at Circus Square. And if they could bring a backpack to help remember. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Are there any other public comments this evening? I don't see being muted. I'll wait till they get to the end of the meeting. All right. The first item for consideration is a second reading of Ordinance BG 2015, number eight.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance rezoning a portion of a tract of land containing 17.7759 acres from AG Agriculture to HB Highway Business and RM4 Multifamily Residential located on Louisville Road and Bristow Road, presently owned by Hilda Jenkins.
Summit.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. This is a second reading. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance BG 2015, number nine.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 0.998 acre from GB General Business, RM4 Multifamily Residential, and LI Light Industrial to OPC Office Professional Commercial located at 501, 525, and 529 Park Street, presently owned by DWC Properties, LLC, Walter &amp; Debbie York, and Commonwealth Health Corporation.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. This is a second reading. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance 2015, number 10.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 1.30 acres from AG Agriculture to HB Highway Business located at 2724 Nashville Road, presently owned by Gilbert, Barbie, Moore, and Melkavoy PSC.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Again, second reading. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Second reading of Ordinance BG 2015, number 11.
Ordinance Amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 25 Code of Ethics of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to amend subchapters related to gifts and other administrative revisions as recommended by the Board of Ethics.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Again, a second reading. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Ordinance number, second reading of Ordinance number 2015, number 12.
Ordinance Relating to Budget Amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number Three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2015.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Williams. Again, this is the last of our second readings. There's any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Now Municipal Order 2015, number 65.
Municipal Order Approving the Promotion of Mark G. Absher to the Position of Civil Engineer II in the Public Works Department.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. I didn't know if I was going to motion you there, Mark. Mr. DeFebo.
We have a long tradition of recognizing and rewarding members of our organization who acquire certain skills they need for their job. I would ask Mike Grubbs to come forward on behalf of Jeff Lashley, who could not be here today, to explain what we're doing here tonight in number six. Michael.
Good afternoon. Some jobs with the city where we've had difficulty in the past filling them due to the requirements we hire in at a lower pay grade and classification, train the employee, and then promote them to the higher level. Civil engineer is one example of that. We also did it in public works operations with laborers moving up to operations technicians, and also in the Fleet Division with mechanics. Mark Absher was hired with the city in 2003, became a civil engineer later that year. He has worked for us, working on numerous projects. A lot of the times, he's been our traffic engineer. He completed the requirements to become a Kentucky professional engineer a year ago, passing the test and the certification requirements, and therefore Jeff Lashley has recommended him for promotion. If this position ever becomes vacant again, we would then refill it at the entry level and go through the same process again. And of course, Mark and his son are here for this promotion.
Go ahead, Mark. Time to stand up. Any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015, 66.
Municipal Order Approving the Probationary Appointment of Jeremy S. Seeger to the Position of Building Services Manager in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
With the retirement of Glenn Burns, the city began a process to acquire the necessary services to serve the building community of Bowling Green and to help finish their projects. The person who needs to do that needs to have certain skills and abilities, so we put together a team from various parts of the community to try to find that right talent. With your courtesy, I'd like for Brent Childers to come forward and talk about Mr. Seeger and the process he went through.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebo. This process started about 10 months ago. We initially advertised for a chief building inspector twice. That advertisement was made locally, statewide, and also through our national ICC organization. After reviewing the applicants that we received, I changed the job description a little bit, dropped the certification requirements on the front end, similar to what Mike was talking about of some of our processes, renamed it to Building Services Manager, advertised again. We received a total of eight applications, interviewed all eight applicants, two rounds of interviews with scenario-based questions, performance-based questions, and also a presentation and writing exercise as part of that. The committee that was involved throughout the whole process was myself, Tiger Tulley with HR, David Souders, the local contractor here in town, and Bob Afling with Contractors Licensing Board. After going through that process, the full committee recommends Jeremy Seeger to this appointment. Jeremy comes from the heavy utility industry. He's been working as a project manager for Scott &amp; Ritter for the last several years. I've been able to work with Jeremy as he's been working on the reservoir hill transmission line project. He's going to take an extra week to get that project done so I can have my street back opened up and my front door back opened up. So we're looking for the completion of that. Jeremy also has experience on the customer service retail side and also was a, served in the U.S. Marine Corps. He has a degree in architectural science from the university, so I think he has a skillset, the leadership, and the management capabilities to fulfill the needs of this job.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Is Jeremy here?
He's at work, trying to finish the pipeline. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you told me we were up there. You didn't stand up.[1007.56][1007.56](applause) Congratulations. I misunderstood. I thought you said he was still on the hill, filling the ditch up.
He's done before he starts.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. If you need to go back, that's okay. Municipal Order 2015, 67.
Municipal Order Approving the Probationary Appointment of Holly M. Vincent to the Position of Special Populations Instructor in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
One of the great things that we do in our Park and Rec Department is provide services to special people with special needs. It takes staff and caring staff. We have a recent opening in that area. We went out to advertisement. We had 22 applicants. We're happy tonight to recommend Holly Vincent. Holly works for Community Action, has four years dealing with another at-risk group, that being seniors, of which I am a member now. So we wholeheartedly recommend Holly to fill this position.
Brent's here, if you have any questions. Do you have any comments or questions? Holly's not here tonight, right? Okay. Didn't want to overlook someone else there. Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015, 68.
Municipal Order Approving the Probationary Appointment of Adam D. Jepson to the Position of Labor II in the Public Works Department.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Mr. DeFebo.
If you remember, last, last month, we appointed the first part of these two-part opening. We're here tonight to feel, recommend Mr. Jepson for this second position. He's one of 52 people who has shown an interest in it. I was not part of the interview process, but his candidacy, in my view, represents some of the things I look for. If you worked on a farm, you know hard work. You know common sense, and he has some schooling, and he has motivation. So we wholeheartedly recommend for him for this position. I don't think he could make it tonight, but...
Oh, he's here.
There he is.
Is he here? Oh, there he is.
Standing up, Adam. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015, 69.
Municipal Order Approving the Reappointment of Joe Davis and the Appointment of Jeff Anderson to the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. These are appointments, joint appointments with the county to fulfill the need from the Hotel Motel Association. They recommend these to us. Unless anybody has any other comments, please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order Approving amended firefighter II career path program. I'm sorry. I was reading, I was doing your job. Municipal Order 2015, number 70.
Municipal Order Approving amended firefighter II career path program for the Fire Department.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Williams. I let you all do it.
This is 4:30.
It is 4:30. It's messed up my time there.
This is another career path program that we have in the city. It doesn't come up much, but it's an important one. I asked Mike Grubbs to prepare a few comments for the commission and the public to understand what we're doing here. Michael.
We have career path programs for several of our job classifications, one of which is for firefighter. After they have achieved their EMT certification and passed a couple of tests and have at least four years of service, they're eligible to move up to firefighter II. They lose that status if they get promoted to fire apparatus operator. The current policy, well, we first adopted a policy for the Fire Department in 1997. There have been a couple of changes since then, but the existing policy has been that it's tied to the fiscal year, that regardless of when in the year the firefighter achieves the status, they don't move up or they don't get the assignment pay until the next July 1st. The Employee Committee asked if that could be changed, that once they achieve the appropriate requirements, that they go ahead and be allowed to become a firefighter II. The program for police officers was actually amended a few years ago, so this would be consistent with that. So the recommendation is that once the firefighter achieves the requirements, they go ahead and become a firefighter II instead of having to wait till the next July 1st. As it happens, a lot of our firefighters in the more recent years were hired in August, September, October. That's when we've allowed new positions to be filled. We have a lot of retirements that happen in the summer. So we've had a lot of firefighters that are hired in the fall, but they don't get that additional recognition or pay till the following July 1st. So it will benefit, the first, the first group to benefit are people who were hired, say, in September of 2011, that they could go ahead and get that pay and recognition rather than wait till the next July 1st. So again, this, the main recommendation here came from the Employee Committee, and the chief and I have supported.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of Ordinance BG 2015, 13.
Ordinance Relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Ordinance Amending the Classification Pay Schedule G for General Classified Employees of the City of Bowling Green for Fiscal Year 2015.
Summit. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
Having an organization that can meet the needs of its mission requires a constant focus on the allocation of skill to function. We're here tonight to hear Jeff Mizell's reorganization plan for the Finance Department. It's something that Jeff and I have been chatting about for nine years. So tonight's the night. Mike's going to give you a little bit of a preamble, structurally, how this works, and Jeff's going to lay out why we're doing it. Mike?
Each year, we adopt a classification pay schedule that covers all full-time and part-time employees at the city, allocating what classification and pay grade they're in. Therefore, if we try to do any type of reorganization or change, that probably necessitates coming back to the City Commission to make the appropriate structural changes in the class and pay schedule in order to accomplish those goals. In this particular case, CFO Mizell will talk to you about his reorganization. That required us to come forward to you with some recommendations to add some classifications and drop some classifications from the schedule in order to carry out the proposed reorganization. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jeff, and if there's any questions about the classification pay schedule, I'll be here to answer those.
Yeah, just, I guess I need to touch on just a little bit of history first. Back before 2006, before I took on the CFO position, there was a CFO position and a treasurer position and a comptroller position. So you had a nice balanced triangle, I guess you'd say. When I accepted the position of CFO, though, in 2006, the treasurer position was also combined with CFO, which kind of left me with just an empty leg of my stool, I guess you'd say, organizationally. So at that point, I decided, and I would continue to do all my treasurer functions, such as managing the Treasury Division, overseeing the License Division. We do have a license manager, David Lyon, for that. And then the comptroller would continue overseeing the accounting, accounts payable payroll. As you know, though, since, back in January, we had a retirement of our comptroller, and soon after, right before that, we had a vacancy in our chief accountant spot, which we moved our senior accounting, senior accountant, senior revenue accountant to that position as a promotion, left the senior revenue accountant position vacant. So right after that, we also had a vacancy or retirement occur in Treasury, and then another part-time position, retirement back in November. So needless to say, instead of automatically backfilling all those positions, which would have combined for available salary budget of about $195,000, I thought, you know, now is an opportunity to kind of look at things across the board. What do we need here? What do we need there? So I've put together what this, this proposal includes is to give me, I guess you may, you may think I'm being selfish, but I, I really need some, some help and support in, in what we're doing with, with finance. And what I did is I created these two positions called Assistant Chief Financial Officer positions. One will oversee the revenue side of finance, one will oversee the accounting or expenditure side of finance, which includes accounts payable and payroll. I feel like my job as CFO is very, is morphed quite a bit since 2006. I'm having to wear a lot of different hats, got my finger in a lot of different pies, and there's a lot of days where I'm, I'm not even over in my office. I'm either in this building or in meetings all day. So I need some boots on the ground, more or less, along with some highly skilled people that can not only, you know, manage and help me supervise, I'm directly supervising about 12 people right now. So I need, I need to divvy that up, balance my organizational structure up again between the revenue and expenditure side, and I feel like this, this will, will take care of that issue and also give me two highly skilled people that can produce the CAFR, that can work on budget, do a lot of other things, keep up, keep us in compliance. The other thing we've run into is with the, the shortage of bodies, as you say, you run into segregation of duties problems, too, because, you know, one person can't, you know, write the checks and reconcile a bank account or approve this or approve that. So we try to have multiple levels of approvers on expenditures, multiple sets of eyes on things. So we run into that challenge, too, being short on staff.[1697.86] So we've run into that challenge, too, being short on staff. So I feel like, though, this new structure gives me balance again. It gives me some cross-functional things as well, because both of these positions would need some expertise in, you know, GASP thirty-four reporting, everything that's entailed with producing the CAFR, the budget, all the other financial reporting we're responsible for. Along with this change, I looked even a little deeper into my organization, and I found some associate positions that I felt like we needed more cross-functional, cross-functioning in those positions. We had two associates in license, we had really three associates positions in treasury and one in accounting that we're looking at. And with the opening in treasury, I thought, now's a good opportunity to really look at that position, what do we need? And as you all remember, we had a license audit performed by our internal auditor, Deborah Jenkins. They kind of pointed out some weaknesses we had in just getting some stuff done in a more timely manner, namely business registrations. We had some lags in getting business registrations set up and entered into the system and some other things in license. So I came up with the idea of using this new position called financial specialist to make that more or less a six slots where the two associates in license, the three in treasury, and the one in accounting could all do the same overall broad job. When we have somebody that's out on vacation in one division, we have more coverage, somebody can step over and cover for that. This also kind of, you know, levels out the, all these three, two or three positions were in two or three different levels in the job grade as well, and they're all basically doing the same, you know, level of jobs. So I feel like this will also help us with our coverage of the switchboard and just coverage across the board. I want to get away from the siloed divisions that we have now and make one big finance department again, and I feel like this will accomplish that, along with the two assistant CFO positions and realigning our department. I know we can't ever keep adding bodies. We're trying to do the most amount of work with the existing staff as we can. We do that through technology, we do that through new ideas, we do that through highly skilled people and through efficiencies, and that's what we're trying to accomplish here. So I humbly ask your consideration of this to help me, get me, help me retool the finance department in moving forward and getting where we need to be. As the, as you remember, the finance department of the third largest city in Kentucky now with the annual budget of a hundred million dollars or better. So ask for your support on this.
With this realignment, there still will be a vacant staff accountant position that Jeff does not plan to fill at the present time, so there is a cost savings with the actions he's proposing.
I think there's a potential savings of anywhere between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars a year with this proposal, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff, I'd just like to personally thank you for everything you've done over the years, especially over the last year. I personally don't know how you've been able to juggle everything, so I'm happy to support this, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything you've done for this city.
Absolutely.
And I concur with that.
Thank you.
So unless there's any other discussion, please call and roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand fifteen seventy-one.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand fifteen forty-three for West End soccer field lighting from Knight Electric Incorporated of Russellville, Kentucky in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Fable.
As the commission knows, we committed to put a new soccer complex in the West End. We divided the work into three contracts. This is the second part. The first part was the earthworks. Now we're moving forward on the lighting. We had four bids. The lowest responsible bid was Knight Electric. Bren is here, if you have any questions about the bidding process.
Any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
I do have a question. Katie, it's my understanding, I know we passed an ordinance before for local preference, and it's for products we purchase, not services?
Right, it's goods only. It does not include services.
Is, it really concerned me with this. I understand we have an ordinance, but that we have a local person that's only nine hundred dollars difference between that. Is there any way we can go back and look and add this possibly to local preference?
The board can certainly take that into consideration. One of the reasons why it wasn't recommended to begin with is because services are not necessarily the same. When you're doing just a commodity or one item, it's an apple-to-apple comparison. But if you're looking at services, you can't always compare one company's service compared to another company's service. So that was why we didn't originally recommend it. We do an annual review of our purchasing policy. We would certainly be glad to look at that and maybe bring that up later in the year if the board wants to consider that further.
But is there any way we could really tell that one person's services are nine hundred dollars better than the other person? Unless we've used them before?
That's a tough call, especially when you get professional services.
Professional services.
Engineering and things.
On electrical and compliance, I don't know that there is. Come up to the microphones, everybody can hear you. Give us your name, please.
My name is Joe Wood. I'm a representative of Knight Electric. We are a local company. We have an office on Dishman Lane, employ fourteen local employees. We also have an office in Russellville, Kentucky, which is our home office, one in Greenville, Kentucky, and one in Clarksville, Tennessee. But we are a local contractor. We've been in business here for five to six years now locally. So we are a local contractor and employ local employees, and we buy locally. Of course, the field lighting that we're speaking of is Musco, and it's coming from a Musco manufacturer, but just to let you know, we are a local company, so.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate that. And just so you know, in our book, it says Russellville.
Yes, ma'am. That's our home office.
But I appreciate you telling me that. That makes me feel much better. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other more discussion? Please call and roll.
Ready? Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand fifteen seventy-two.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand fifteen forty-two for Clearlane Enhanced De-icer from Cargill Incorporated De-Icing Technologies Business Unit of North Olmsted, Ohio in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, thirty-two dollars.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Fable.
The year before last was a difficult year for everybody involved in snow removal as there was shortages for de-icer. To avoid any chance of getting surprised, we went out to bid early this year, and glad to say we are going to be saving about forty-three thousand dollars cheaper by going out to bid earlier for the product that we need. Melissa's here, if you have any questions about the product.
Any comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand fifteen seventy-three.
Municipal order approving the year twelve annual action plan and year eleven annual action plan amendment of the consolidated plan for community development block grant entitlement funding and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin, Mr. Fable.
One of the ways that the Department of Housing and Urban Development operates is they believe in the importance of planning. They have a five-year plan, they have a one-year plan, they have a public hearing plan. We're here tonight, after all those various other component plans, to basically tell you what Brent told you last month, that we want to use the new money for as well as the old money. That plan is in your packet. Brent embedded it well, as did Nick. They're both here, if you want to go over it again, but if not, we feel confident that we've done everything correctly, and we think we have a good plan to move forward with the CDBG money.
If somebody doesn't know about the plan, they haven't been paying any attention. Any comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand fifteen seventy-four.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the police department in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning, Mr. Fable.
We're here tonight to ask your approval for Nick to apply for a grant from the Department of Justice to purchase twenty-five new bulletproof vests. The feds have this program, and they'll provide up to fifty percent. We have to ask for their help, so tonight is the ask, and they'll put twenty-one thousand in if we get approved, and we'll put the twenty-one thousand in to purchase our ongoing bulletproof vests. Nick's here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand fifteen seventy-five.
Municipal order declaring tract of property containing approximately zero point zero zero eight-four acre or three hundred and sixty-seven square feet located in the city public parking lot near the corner of Eighth Avenue and State Street surplus and authorizing conveyance of this property to Steamer Seafood Bowling Green LLC for economic development purposes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Fable.
I think we're all justifiably excited about steamers coming to join the fine family of restaurants that we have in our community. They are going, as you can notice, they're doing work at the old Mariah's, and they want to improve the layout there and provide better public service, particularly have an outdoor seating area that will add to the dining experience. Due to the tightness of the lot, they've asked your indulgence to provide to them three hundred and sixty-seven square feet running along the parking lot side of the property to create, essentially help to create a seating area. We had our surveyor go down there and make sure it was possible and doesn't impact the parking and would do as we are being asked. We support it. Melissa's here, if you need any discussion about the actual layout, and Jean has handled the legal part of this, but we recommend your approval.
This is approximately about a three-foot strip of land, the length of the building on the parking lot side, and does not affect parking spaces in any way, shape, or form. Is that accurate?
Doesn't affect parking nor create a safety problem. You have to have twenty-one feet, I believe, twenty-one?
A little over twenty-two is left.
So this makes it, I think it'll make a difference there. We saw drawings, they're going to look pretty neat.
And I understand that the organization is bringing their administrative staff from South Carolina and headquartering them here.
I heard that also.
I heard that also. Dale's smiling at me back there, so we know we're going to hold him to it. All right, any other comments or questions?
I want to personally thank Mr. Augustine for investing in our community, continually investing in our university and our community. I've been to Hilton Head to his restaurant, and it's wonderful, so we're in for a real treat.
I'm looking forward to it there. Sure am. Any other comments? Please call and roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Municipal order two thousand fifteen seventy-six.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the submission of a request to the Kentucky Alcoholic Beverage Control Board to increase the number of quota retail package store licenses and quota retail drink licenses in the city to forty-one for each license.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin, Mr. Fable.
I think we were all surprised when we received notification from the Kentucky Administrative Apparatus in Frankfurt concerning the number of licenses that we could have for retail drink and retail package stores. It creates a problem for us, and they've chosen to redefine that. To our benefit, however, there is an appeal process. Jean has, in his role as city attorney and consultation with Doug and others, has put together an appeal, asking us to have more of the licenses that we feel we need to make this a viable community, and I'm going to let Jean explain what he's exactly asked for. Jean?
Yes, sir. As we've talked about before, we were surprised when our numbers went down. And then, make sure everybody understands, this impacts quota only, quota retail drink licenses and quota package stores. It does not infect Steamer Restaurants. They will get a restaurant license, so it has no impact on our restaurants at all, but it does impact all the others. I think I've got the numbers here. Our retail drink licenses, we thought we had at one time a few months ago, forty-nine such licenses. They reduce us, the state reduces down to twenty-four. We have issued thirty-seven, so we're thirteen over. It may be a long time before we ever have another one of those to issue. We have heard, and I, the finance can confirm, have been probably at least two the last few weeks or few months have been sold from an existing holder to somebody else, and they can do that under the ABC regulations. They can find somebody willing to sell them, and they can agree on a price, then they can purchase that license from somebody else and use at a different location, and we've heard that that has happened. Our retail package stores, we reduced from fifty-three to twenty-six. We have issued twenty-five, and we think we're on a verge of issuing our twenty-sixth. So we anticipate in the next few weeks, we will be out of package store licenses totally. And that could be a fairly big economic issue for us, should we get another big box grocery store, for example, wanting to come here and not able to get a package store license to go along with that. As Mr. Fable said, the ABC regulations do have a kind of an appeal, but it's a request to increase, but now these are based on one for every twenty-three hundred people for one, twenty-five hundred people for the other. We can request, the most we can do is one for every fifteen hundred people. I'm about probably ninety percent finished with the request, trying to get some information. Vicky Fitch gave me some yesterday on our two thousand and fourteen tourism numbers. I think will help us as well, too. Basically trying to focus particularly on our population and our rapid growth, our rapid economic development here. I think it does set us apart. I may raise a couple of issues with ABC. I'm not sure they'll care about how they came up with this formula, because I'm not really sure if population loan is a good measure to use, so we may broach that issue, but otherwise, we will comply with what they want us to send, including population, retail sales numbers, alcohol sales numbers, the best we can get them, and our tourism issues. Again, we will do that, and I'm proposing right now that we request the maximum we can get, which would be forty-one for each one. Forty-one will give us a significant number of new package stores. It only gives us four more retail drink licenses. There may be some legislative changes maybe proposed before the next legislative session to help resolve some of these issues, too, because I know that is one thing we've talked with KLC and others about, that may help us in the long run. But at least right now, I think everybody thinks we need to move to try to increase our numbers. It's, you know, it is kind of bad now. You're paying sometimes significant dollars to get a license. If you can find one, we're going to sell, and particularly the package store, that could be an economic loss to us if we don't move on that one. If you approve this, Miss Boarder, I do have to put an ad in the Daily News. We'll try to get that ad to them probably tomorrow if I can get to them, like it's ready to go. I want to make sure you approve this before I put the ad in the paper. And then after that, we'll send the application to the state ABC board. If they approve it, then they will have to take it to the state administrative, I guess, house before the board, to actually amend the administrative regulation, because they will actually amend that regulation, put in that regulation the exact number that we are allowed. It is amendable. They do have some automatic language in that, that if the population goes up, they will automatically increase your numbers. But again, they were using a twenty-three, one for twenty-three hundred, one for twenty-five hundred. We think that's insufficient for us. That's why we use the one at fifteen hundred basis. The population is based on University of Louisville State Data Center. They have already done estimates for two thousand and thirteen, so I'm using those numbers. Even since two thousand and ten, we've grown from what, about fifty-eight thousand to about sixty-one thousand, five hundred. So we are a growing community, and I think that will help make our case with the state ABC board. We'll see what they do. I think they will approve it, but again, we're asking for the maximum number of forty-one for each one, if you all approve this today.
This is the population in the city limits?
Yes. Before, they based this on the population of the county. They changed it. Now they're based on the population of the city. Since one county is a dry county, they changed it just for city population. And one of the, I guess, kind of silly things about this, if one county went wet, we would, our numbers would basically double instantly, and all those could be issued in the city of Bowling Green, which may be another good reason, use population. That one simple change would double our quota, and when we could, it's basically first-in lines, first-in time, and where the applications come in will be approved. So if all the applications came in the city, they'd all be approved in the city. But we have to live with the regulations we now have.
I did have a discussion with one of the, I call it beverage control administrators, who indicated that the legislation, legislators, pardon me, forced them to create the regulations in the fashion that they had, and, you know, my comment to them was that by limiting those, you have made the trade in a state asset as valuable as the product that you're selling. And they clearly understood that, but said, what they're doing, and they're just following their direction under state law, so. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2015-77.
Municipal order approving parks and recreation fees.
Summe.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Fable.
One of the changes we made a number of years ago was switching from staff, making the decision what to charge folks for fees at Park and Rec, and getting your approval of those fees. We're again going with that tradition and have tonight a recommendation from Brent to revise our fees. There's a total of three hundred and sixty-five fees. Brent, in his role as Park and Rec Director, is recommending ten new ones, most of those applied to the new batting facility, and twenty-one other adjustments, either up or down. Most of those are being made by Brent in his wisdom to help us compete in a recreational market. Brent's here, if you'd like him to go through the various changes, or if not, he'll answer any question you'd like.
Any comments or questions? He put his towel on to come here tonight, and you might as well be using for something.
Can you describe the fee structure on the new batting facilities, in case we're asked?
Sure, let me, three hundred and sixty-five pages, and I believe that'll be on like page six or seven, so hold on, bear with me for a second. It's on page eight. The fee structures, for those watching at home, we divided them up, it's, it's really ten different fee structures, divided between a half-hour and an hour rental. If you remember about the, the Hart Family Indoor Training Facility, it'll consist of three batting cages. Those cages can be pushed back to have a full-size indoor Little League field, per stipulations of our agreement, those fields, or that, that facility will not be rented out, or, or will be for the primary purpose of East and West Little League, with coaches' pitch from Bowling Green Parks and Recreation used from February fifteenth through June the fifteenth. And then, we'll actually have some Special Olympics, our Special Olympic program, we hired a young lady tonight to help us with that. They will begin use of that in the months of July and August, preparing for softball. Besides that, after June the fifteenth, barring East Little League All-Star teams making it to Williamsport, Pennsylvania for the national championship, it'll be available for public rental at that point. And, in my personal opinion, we will see predominantly use or rental requests from roughly November, December, January, February type frame. So, we'll have, maybe a best guess, about twenty weeks of inclement weather, that will probably lead the majority of our rentals in that facility. And then, the fee structure for that, the half-hours would lead anywhere from just the, the field itself of fifty dollars, one cage to twenty, two cages to thirty, three cages to forty, the entire facility at seventy-five dollars for one, for thirty minutes of use. Then, for the, an hour use, the field again at seventy-five dollars, one cage for thirty dollars, two at forty, three at fifty, the entire facility at one hundred and fifty dollars. Once again, stipulation being a team rental, in other words, it would not be available for a one-on-one training session, it would be a team to be able to use that facility.
Just like that, we had some, I don't know if difficulty is the word, but some discernment about what to charge, because we don't have experience about the utilities, so the rate Brent's proposing will be a beta rate, a test rate for the next year, once we have a better track record. And we also didn't want to try to undercut people who are already providing this service for a living, so we, we were tactical about what we charged.
Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, thank you. That was the last item on the agenda, but we have one more piece of business to do. A request from Bowling Green Municipal Utilities to declare this as Drinking Water Week. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas any measure of successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity and public safety are in some way related to access to safe water, and whereas we're all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each citizen of our city is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water, now therefore, we, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners, do hereby, hereby proclaim May third through ninth, 2015, as Drinking Water Week, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of our tap water, and I'll present this proclamation to our BGMU representative on the commission, Mr. Williams.
Thank you so much. Sue wants everybody to know that she filled up her water bottle out of the water fountain.
Good job.
So, it's genuine stuff. I'm certainly for it.
For water, right, as we all are. Any other items for the good of the order?
There was some question about when we would do work sessions. Kate and I chatted about this, we won't leave it as is. I think there's a couple of different options. If, for example, if a vote is not required and it's a minor item, we could do it at the end of a meeting. If it maybe needs a vote, we might want to do that in the beginning. If it's a significant issue, we probably will have unbundled special call meeting. If it doesn't have a need to meet, we won't meet, if that's okay with you.
That works out for us.
Okay.
All right. That's the last item. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, May nineteenth, at two fifteen, or two thousand and fifteen, at four thirty.
It's election day, I promise.
May nineteenth is, oh, it'll be done. Thank you so much for attending.